Can I say something to just kind of the volunteer stuff? I talked to Taylor today. She's brainstorming a idea about getting all the different departments involved at the school for a big community service deal. And she's talking about adopting fire hydrants to be able to clean them up, paint them like they should be. You know, a few years ago, probably two or three years ago, we did the fire hydrants with SCCLA. But it was kind of a, it was like kind of a rushed deal. We didn't get to prep them like we needed to. So the paint's there, but it's not, it's not like it should be. Anyways, uh, she's gonna mention it, or talk with you about it actually. But she is talking about doing it for the, uh, I can't even remember what it is now, but trying to get all the departments to where like, you know, SCCLA would adopt some, uh, the Honor Society would adopt some, FAFA would adopt some, athletics would adopt some, and anyways, as part of a community service project. I know Chad would appreciate it, I know Rory would appreciate it, because those things are kind of difficult to.
How many fire hydrants do we have?
Do you have any idea?
I do not know that answer, but I know that we have a map that has them mapped out. And they also show the rate of flow, you know. I don't know if y'all are aware of this, but fire hydrants are color-coded for the amount of output that they provide. And so, you know, we have to make sure that we're painting them the proper color for their output, for the fire department. But that's something that she wants to try to get together. And, you know, she has to have the city buy in as well to allow that, but that would be pretty neat.
Okay. Voting out, who's discussing, consider approval of resolution eight twenty-one, deny encore's rate increase. This goes with that class action lawsuit that we joined in June where, um, we were trying to slow their increase in the rates. The attorney in charge sent it to us and said that there were some, was it appeals or, uh, do you remember? I didn't print the email. Printed the original. It would take a little bit longer than I expected. Sent this one.
What'd you say, Rhonda?
It's an oncoming settlement, I'm waiting.
No other competition.
There's no other option. Call them, say you need your delivery charges produced.
I make motion, we approve this resolution.
A motion and a second, all approved, all votes, motion carries. Okay, the next one is discuss, discuss and consider approval to advertise for a land removal contract later. We're wanting to post this as a job. It doesn't have to be in the newspaper, it can just be posted to our Facebook page or whatever, but Shane is not doing, pulling his end of the deal. Cause people are calling Kerry, they're calling me, and.
I got an email this morning.
Yeah, it's, and if it's a service we're gonna offer, then we need it to be when we say it is. And so I was proposing, maybe we advertise, see if we have any interest from somebody else.
So this would be connected, um.
And disposing of it.
And disposing of, um, not on any city property.
Right.
I just, I understand to a certain extent, but I also.
Who else is gonna come in?
That's, that's why we want to advertise, see if we get some interest.
Yeah, Shane is repeatedly, I mean, just doesn't show up.
He hasn't showed up in two months.
Yeah. I see him out mowing lawns all the time though. But he can't get around to pick up the lands, it's extremely frustrating.
Well, he came up to me on my way to the post office, um, the Wednesday before the last Friday of the month, and told me that he would be picking up limbs that were for the bonfire. And as far as I could tell, nothing else.
Yeah.
I still get calls.
I'm running out of things to tell people.
I'm gonna give Shane's address.
I was to the point of yes, let's give him his phone number.
But I know that there was some confusion, are we still making a list to provide to Shane?
Yes.
Cause I know some people were like, well, I never called him, like, well, you can't expect to be on the list if you don't call to be put on the list.
Right. No, I'm getting both calls and emails, people called to get on the list, and then I give it to him earlier than the week.
And he had the list for the past two months.
Yeah.
I make a motion, we approve advertising for them removal contract, like, contract later.
Where are you going to advertise?
Put it on the city website, and put it on Facebook, we've got it.
Not only would I cost me money.
Yeah.
Second.
The motion is second, all approved, all votes, motion carries.
Could that, just on the assignment, could that be a service project for high school kids? I'm not.
Or is there type of.
I think that's the problem, where you're gonna take.
That's true.
I mean, it would, it would be great, but you gotta have somewhere.
And I don't, I don't know how much it costs to take them to the lake. Some people say it costs a whole lot, and then some people say it doesn't cost very much.
It's gonna cost you because they're gonna weigh it.
Have to deal with, it's not cheap.
Cause they're, it, it's, it's by weight, so let's say you have a tree that you've, that's fallen, and you, you know, it's some big branches. I mean, if it's just a little bit of a pile, then no, it's not gonna cost you much, but they have flat rates, then they're also gonna weigh you in and weigh you out.
They're gonna weigh you with the weight.
I mean, if you could walk out there and throw it in there by hand, those couple of branches that fall, no, not to be anything but.
Anything that's gonna require you to get a trailer, it's gonna cost you.
And one thing, I don't, I'm not sure if y'all are aware, um, Republic does pick up limbs with their bolts. The only thing is, it's minimal.
Has to be in like four foot bundles and a bundle.
They will not pick, if it's supposed to be.
Yeah, the person that.
Four foot by four foot, if it's four and a half foot by four foot, they're not picking it up. They will drop right on by.
Well, and the person that I had, or that had emailed me this morning, said that they've tried, um, to go through Republic, and it took several weeks.
They never should have went and called for special pickup.
Really?
Never.
Can we flip this out? I might recall, just putting something out for someone to volunteer to do it, do we actually pay?
We pay, well, not, we don't pay.
Well, we pay him a flat, anyway, not based on.
He usually just invoices this based on, I guess, what he thinks of.
And that may be something that we need to work out, to pay, yeah, piece good, we'll pay good for it.
Yeah.
So we always have the option, you know, we just lit up the bonfire. We could start staggering there, we could start from up here.
We could start it over.
Can I ask? Yes. Always an option, I don't want it necessarily where it is, but we, I would like it to be back. And then we can move it up towards where the bonfire is before, but if y'all want that, I'm always here to work with y'all on that.
I mean, if we wanted to do a service, if we're not getting traction, and we wanted it to be like a service project, because our National Honor Society needs ours, National Honor Society needs ours, our kids need stuff to put on their resumes, so that's ours. So, I mean, I'm not, that may not be a permanent solution, but that could help.
We have stuff that needs to be picked up now.
Yeah. And if we really, really didn't find, I gotta keep places. Our own personal bonfire. But that might be an idea if we don't get any traction on it, and they could see us from the moon next year.
I don't know, burning other schools' bonfires is still a thing like it used to be.
I'll set up tent, I'll guard it.
Next, discuss and consider approval of moving forward with property exchange with limited occupancy. This is just a vote of, what are we gonna do? Are we going to move forward with a swap, or some sort of disposition, or are we going to decide to keep it?
Wouldn't have to propose a piece of property to swap first before we.
It is, it's in here.
Which one is it?
It's on the north side of town, a big piece.
Because, um, when Mr. Griggs was here in August, we talked about getting the, um, property surveyed, and he, he was able to do that. And then, um, that's what he's included in your packet. Now, right here, this is, um, this is Block K, so you are.
Which one are you looking at?
This one, this one's Block K, and this would be.
This one is.
This is my one, I can help with whatever I need to, I didn't wanna overstep and.
Yes.
Alright, so, council, I, I wanna throw it out there, like, we're not married to anything, we're not. So when I spoke last time, we talked about the property off of Granger, we talked about property at the end of Second, and at the end of Third. Um, so what we've done as a school, we went ahead and paid for a spot to be surveyed off, which means it is ready to get appraised. Um, it is at the end of Second Street, so it's one point three eight acres on the CAD. Y'all's actually shows one point four, but our surveyor says it is the exact same square footage as y'all's Block K property. Okay, so I figure, so I guess the CAD just rounds up a little bit. Um, so when you go in front of y'all's property on Block K, where Second goes down, that's in to our property down there by the old church. Everybody know what I'm talking about? Uh, we surveyed off a section right there, it's less than four hundred feet from your current property. Um, I also put in there that we've got the property over, uh, off of Granger, BF's old property. Um, at the end of the day, the school district is willing to move into a trade on whatever property works for you guys. If there's another one that's out there, um, that works better for y'all, tell me, I'll, I'll pay to have it surveyed, I'll pay to have it appraised. Um, we just are committed to trying to find something that works for both of us. So that's, that's where, the, the one at the end of Second is, is ready to go. I wasn't gonna pay for an appraisal until we knew that this could be something. Um, but I've got an appraiser sitting on go, ready to appraise that, so. But I'm here to answer any other questions y'all want.
I guess I just don't, I don't understand why we're still kind of discussing this, like. I don't, I just don't understand. I don't understand what the big deal is with keeping that particular piece of property, and not switching to something that could potentially better us and sell Block K.
It's a matter of the, the location of where they could put the, the pump, it shouldn't be.
So, like, I've talked with Rory, and I was really hoping that he was gonna be here tonight. Um, I read through the, um, planning study for 2010, and I can't find anywhere in there that it says we have to have a pump station. And so I, I, I don't, I don't know, I don't understand where that's coming from. It also states that our current PSI is approximately sixty-five, which according to the TCEQ is well above what is required. I also don't understand, so the, what is required, the standard from the TCEQ is thirty-five PSI. And we were sitting in 2010 at sixty-five. I also don't understand, and Rory and I talked in depth, there was six inch line running over there. We have water pressure issues across twenty-two. So why wouldn't we wanna move to a piece of property that could potentially help that side of town, when this side of town, we're never gonna outgrow, we're never gonna grow in this part of town enough to need that. But that side of town is already having, experiencing water pressure issues. It also gives us a location to possibly store things, to have a spot. I, I just don't, I don't understand. I, I, if, if it's just holding on to that, and I know that we've mentioned before, it's the cost of what the city, the school listed, the property, which is really not any of our business, but I've talked with an individual that was ready to make an offer and buy the lot, until he called Rory and found out he could not purchase what we had. So he didn't even make an offer. Right now, that property's sitting there making us zero dollars. First outage should just buy Amanda Hakkison's lot, so we're fixing to lose that off the tax roll. The moment that Block K sells, we start making a profit, regardless if there's never a property built on it. So I, I just, I don't, I guess I don't understand why we're, I get, I, we don't need to just give a piece of property away, and we need to have an equitable trade, and something that's good for us. So why not trade with something that's a piece of property on the side of town that's already experiencing water pressure issues?
Okay, I'll try to address your questions. Number one, the need for a second pressure system wasn't in the 2010, it's in the 2016 water supply study.
Well, we couldn't find the 2016 water supply study.
Okay, well, it's gotta be somewhere. I may have a copy on my computer, but it clearly says, I think in the early thirties, the city starts to need to do an engineering study to establish a second water input into our system. So, that's where it started. Now, I think we talked about it, you weren't here at that, that meeting. But, the thing about a water distribution system, what sets the pressure is the elevated tank. So, our distribution system for the water is basically designed from the center part of the city outward. So the water distribution pipes here in the center of the city, we have more six inches pipes closer together, you know, because it's gotta force the water out to the perimeter. Now, the reason the water pressure is lower up there is the ground elevation is about twenty foot higher. So, like I said, the elevated tank sets the pressure up here, it's not gonna go any higher, okay? Their elevation is up here, so you have less pressure, you know? So putting a station up there isn't gonna really increase the pressure, because the pressure's set by the elevated tank. Okay? Number two, and I'm not saying the second water supply pump station or tank has to be an elevated tank, it could be a pump station with a hydrodynamic tank. But in any event, you know, you wanna get as high elevation as you can. If it's gonna be an elevated tank, the lower elevation, which is on this one, the one at the end of Second Street, which I'm very familiar with, because that was my mother's pasture, and that very spot was where the barn was. So I looked on the, on the US GS. And the ground elevation there is some fifteen foot lower than our lot on that, on Block K. So, the elevated tank would have to be fifteen foot higher, or the pumps there would have to pump into the, distribution system from that lower level, so the city would be faced with paying the electric cost of having the pump into the distribution at that, from that lower elevation from now on. So, that's not an advantage for the cities, neither one of them is. BF's property, the ground elevation is higher up there, like I said. The problem is to get that water all the way down to here. The elevated tank is out of service, just like we're gonna have here in about two weeks, you know? Then all we got is this pump, the pumps down here. The second input system would, you know, something catastrophic happens down here, the second input into the water system needs to be in a place where it can better say, serve the whole community, which, as I said earlier, the water distribution system is built from the center of the city out into perimeters. So up there, across twenty-two, there's only two six inch lines that go across there. So if we use BF's property, we would need to build another distribution line over to this side of the town. It might continue to be an acre, maybe higher. That's not an advantage to the city. So, you're kinda thinking about this, superintendent, I know you said you wanted an idea. When I looked at it, you look at the northwest corner of Block K, its ground elevation, it would be the one that shows the city property.
And then this is Block K.
Yeah. Where the city owns the property now, it's about five foot lower than the elevated tank. So if a tank there would be five foot higher, as opposed to further down where my mother's barn was, it's being twenty foot high. The northwest corner of Block K, the ground elevation is about the same as the elevated tank. So we put something there, you know, we wouldn't have to build a taller tank. And we wouldn't, if it's a hydrodynamic tank, we, we wouldn't have to pump into a higher pressure than what it is now, so.
So that would be like the parcel number three, four, one, one, six, is that?
Uh, I think it's three, four, one, two, three, you know, a corner of that one.
Oh, okay, I was.
Is the school on that part?
Yeah, we, we own everything else.
It still sits, even doing that, it still sits in the same predicament of whoever wants to buy that, that lot cannot buy the entire lot. It changes the lot sizes.
It's gonna have to be replanted anyway.
And I was really hoping that, that Rory was gonna be here, so that he could answer some questions that, for y'all, that he's already answered for me, and that, in his professional opinion, we will never see the need to have another water pump station. That will never grow, we're landlocked, we can't really, and that, in his professional opinion, the better option is to go across twenty-two. And so, I mean, I just, I just don't, it, I don't, it doesn't make any sense to me.
I thought Rory agreed with us, that, that we needed to look for another piece of property last time. So, I mean, he's saying two different things, he said he agreed with us at the last meeting, that we needed to look for another piece of property. So if he told you different.
I think, I think Rory was, I think Rory was telling the plot, and Rory was upset. Um, I've had multiple conversations, the same conversation, the same, and I point blank asked him, what is your, what is your opinion? As a person that's in charge of our water, what is, what is your opinion? And he's telling the same thing over and over again. This whole situation with Block K is not just something that recently arose, it's been going on for years, and I just don't, we have a chance to increase our property taxes.
I a hundred percent agree with that, it would be nice to sell it, but it would be nice to, to benefit the city if we sell it. Instead of putting the city at a disadvantage.
I would rather, instead of doing a trade, if we without a doubt do not need this property, I'd rather sell it and be done with it. And sell it to the school.
But we can't, it has to be a.
We can't.
No, we can't.
We, we can do that, there's just, there's a way around it.
Around the bidding process.
It's a sealed bid process.
But we still take the risk of other bids coming in.
Yeah.
But that's the meaning of that though, that's the purpose of that.
Yeah.
They should get.
It should be.
Ms. Mahalas.
I don't see the purpose, I mean, if, if there's even a possibility of it being beneficial to the city in the future, I would say why box yourself out at this point? You don't have to make a decision right now, then, if it's not beneficial for you, then you shouldn't make a urgent decision when it's not necessarily known at this point in time.
And what the city attorney said in the letter to us, that we can get into an exchange as long as it, as long as it is not disadvantageous to the city, nor in a manner that does not serve the public interest. So, to me, keeping the options open serves the public interest. And at least, the properties that are shown, you know, that the school district is willing to, to trade, to me, or on my professional opinion, are disadvantageous to the city.
Do y'all mind if I speak? So, just wanna make sure all council members are aware, we're open to any property that we own, discussion. So I've, and I'm sorry if I haven't been clear on that, I've, I've asked for suggestions, I've not received any, so we went with one that was as closest to Block K property. I'll be honest, didn't realize it was, the elevation was that much lower, and it was that, that was a deal, where I wouldn't have paid to have it surveyed. Um, if there is one that y'all know of, whether it's closer to the baseball field, or anything, like, I'm open for any suggestion.
Is there a possibility that we carve out some of the back area by the baseball field, by the, when you go down, whatever the street is, and turn into the baseball? How much, how much room do we have to have for a pump station?
Yeah, it would have to be equitable to our property.
Because that's with that switch, let's say, our, our lot appraises for ten thousand dollars, which with them appraises for nine, they're gonna give us, then they have to give us a thousand dollars. So it's, as far as equitability, it's not like we're just gonna be out.
Right, and we're out with the optimal place to put the pump station.
But is that really the optimal place?
So my question, do we have an optimal place for y'all? Is, do we have an optimal place? And if y'all, if there is one, let me go back to our board and talk about it, I know at our board, not speaking for them, but I know what they're gonna say, survey that sucker off and see if we can do a swap. Is there anything that we own that is optimal to y'all? If there's not, then that's, the question's done, and then we need to go to, back to the next conversation about grabbing it up and putting a bus bar on there. Because we can't do anything that benefits the school district, and that's sell it and invest back into our school district, into other buildings and other properties. But if there is an optimal property, I'm all for, where is that? Let's talk about it, let's do it, but if there's not, then let's, let's move on from it.
Okay, do we want to table this, so we have a little time to research and see if there's something better?
Do we have a list of all the school-owned properties?
I mean, I can pull it up on the CAD, I mean, it's pretty simple. It's what, there's no land that we can give up around the high school. You've got all the property that goes around the ba, backside of the baseball field to the end of Second, that we're talking about in that elementary, that's about it. So, I mean, if we wanna pull up the, I've got the CAD, I was actually looking at while you were talking, I mean, you know, you have, um, I think it's just a right-of-way, it's not even a, it's an easement, it's not even a road, so you have the road that comes in from Block K, then goes right into the baseball field, that property goes up around the braze property, and then it goes back down around ten carreled sun law, I'm sorry, I'm being very informal there, and then back up to, um, the property that we're just talking about. So, I mean, that's, that's the, pretty much what we own.
Same.
Yep. All the way up to the cemetery, that is higher elevated, but I don't know what that does for, I'm not an expert on y'all, what y'all need, so.
But something you wanna do is do some research and see if there's a more optimal slot to put it, or.
I just, I think that this is just gonna, it's not, there, if we, there's not anything that's gonna make, that, that's gonna make everyone happy, because in my personal opinion, we have personal feelings and agendas towards it in relation to that particular piece of property, and I just don't really.
I think you need to understand engineering.
There you go.
And, and you know, Bill, I may not, but I also don't understand why we're, while we're looking at playing a game, and you left the last meeting saying that you have these three on your side. I don't appreciate that. I'm looking at what is the best for this community and this school district.
I think we are all looking, just to level set, what is best for the community.
I've got, I could, I don't care anything at all about Block K. I, and I would like to see it sold for the whole community. But I also don't wanna put the community where now we've gotta spend thousands of dollars more in the event that we ever do need a pump station.
And I wanna be clear, neither do I, that's never my, my intention at the school. I've got one, one job and look out for the school, and I'm, and I'm, I'm being dead serious, I'm not trying to be smart aleck when I say that. If this is not an option, then it's not, we need to move on, but I wanna be very open and clear that nothing we have is off limits.
Do you think if we don't move forward, we need to fence the property in, start maintaining it, that way that whoever does do anything with it knows what they have?
Of course it doesn't work, but it's all.
Yeah, right, yeah.
I mean, there is, I mean, there is a little bit down here behind the ag, but it's way too low. I, I got, I mean, I'm just telling you everywhere.
Higher elevation.
And I've kinda promised it to, to a certain ag teacher, so don't want her mad at me. So.
So is there anywhere that would be a higher elevation or be in, I mean?
BP is higher.
For our work.
But we'd have to build mains or larger mains to get it back towards the city center.
And what was Rory basing on the fact that we'll never need one? How could he possibly know that? Based, based on his, his opinion of what we have in the city, and we're landlocked, we're not, we're not growing, we're not, what, what are we gonna build? Like, and I, I'm, I'm, and I'm gonna just be upfront and honest, I, this is bothering me. Comments that were made at the last meeting that I wasn't at, it bothers me. I'm not trying to play a game, and, like, it's not a game. And it just, in talking with Rory, the better option, his opinion, in what he works with the city, was to be on the other side of twenty-two. If it is a higher elevation, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful in your, in your professional degrees, but I, I do tend to feel that since you've been retired, there's been advancements in engineering, that it may not matter that much. Like, how do we truly know that that property across twenty-two is not the ideal? Like, we're sitting on ideas that we just, that this is the way it has to be. There's gotta be some other ways, there's gotta be a compromise somewhere. Otherwise Block K is gonna turn into a bus farm, and I don't think any of us want that. Like, and it, we can get some tax revenue from it. I would love to be able to say, well, we're obviously, we want X amount of dollars, and they say, okay, we wanna buy. We have a sealed bid, yes, the likelihood that anybody's gonna bid on it is probably slim to none, but there's always that chance. There are multiple people that I've had conversations with that said, as soon as it's all the block, they're, they're proceeding to buy it. And we're the holder. I don't understand why it's a fight.
Well, it's not, I don't think it's a fight, I think, I think maybe you've come with some agenda on this more than anybody else.
Because I don't care, I'm really, I truly just want what's best for the city, and I don't see the rush to get Block K on the market. I don't see, so how long do we wait? And where those feelings come from is Bill walking out of the meeting the last time and saying, well, I got Renee on my side, I got Sarah on my side, and I got Joey on my side. That's where those feelings are. You may have been misinformed, because some people do, yeah. Yeah, this is walking out of this building. Walking out, I'm being misinformed, I'm just saying.
You know, so all things aside, everything aside, we just need to move forward with all of the pros and cons of each, because I see both sides of it.
Right.
We need to know without a doubt, we either need that property or we don't need the property. If we don't need the property, then like I said, get rid of it.
But I think I'm looking to know without a doubt, it's an engineering state that we can afford.
The last engineering state was twenty sixteen.
Was that with that, um, block grant that we've been working on, or was it something different?
No, it was a separate standalone study.
I didn't know if it might come and been the one that we're working on with.
It's a report signed and sealed by a professional engineer, not me, not my friends.
Maybe we need to pull that report, so I'm thinking, we probably need to table this.
Can we put it in the special meeting, this is fifteen, and I was actually going to a closed session and discuss this, and I feel like.
It would be allowable in a closed session because it's a property matter.
You said, would it be allowable?
It would be.
Oh, would it, okay. Can we do it in a special meeting?
I don't see why not, I had a post.
You had a post agenda?
Cause I do agree that we can optimal to sell.
Yes, sell the whole thing.
And make the, the revenue.
Yeah.
You can't saddle the city with thousands of dollars of additional construction, you know? But, and that's not what I want. If we ever get to a pump station, regardless if we have that lot or a different one, we're gonna have to have the construction. Like, it's gonna, if we ever get to that point.
Right, but with this one, we don't have to have the tank fifteen extra additional feet elevated.
It could be an overall.
But we don't, but.
Eight inch line, because it's on the other side of twenty-two.
And I under, and I'm, don't get me wrong now, I'm, I'm hearing that, but how do we truly know that that's what we, that's what we have to have?
We don't, we don't.
You know, that, that's what I.
That's why you need to keep your options open.
Well, and I don't, I, I mean, I don't know how much more open that we have our options. I mean, the, the school is saying, name a piece of property that we have, we can look, so I don't. I, I don't see how our options could not be any more open than that.
Maybe I was saying, keep your options open, it doesn't have to be with the school.
I mean, do we have any other property? Like, is there any other property that we have that would be an option for the pump station?
I'm not aware of any.
Cause that's something that we could also look at in that meeting, and if there is, like I said, I would.
Yeah, a hundred percent, be done with Block K.
Yeah.
If there is another.
Where the community garden is? What about where the community garden is?
He's watching me pick pears.
They're all rotting on the ground, yeah, those trees are busting.
Okay, so.
I don't know how, I, how long it is, but I could look at it.
But what, what if we looked at this? If the community garden is a place that could be optimal, then we still look at swapping properties, so then we have an access point on the other side of town to hold whatever we need up there.
Yeah, well, and that makes it an equitable switch and gives them the whole block too, so. Look at, can, before the fifteen, can you look at the community garden and see if it's a viable?
And we can look at any other properties that we might have that we're just not aware of, as well as any other, like, a list of school properties that would be options for switching. And can discuss all of that at fifteen.
I mean, does it necessarily have to be the school property? It could be owned by somebody else, and then the school can pay us for ours, and we can buy theirs. That may be a little much, but.
I think that might be a little bit too, too much.
Too complicated.
Probably the fault property over there. The corner of Higley and, uh, Third Street.
So why did you call it property?
Oh, I know where you're talking about, it's kinda all, your mother owned the back, there was like two properties there, so it's on the front spot.
Yes. Um, does the city own it? The city owns it?
I don't even know if they'd be, uh, open to sell.
The optimal thing would be the community garden would be a viable solution. And we just, let them pay us for Block K, and we, I mean, for our push on Block K, we can.
Cause it would bring the city more rep tax revenue.
I mean, we're fixing to lose as soon as that, cause First Baptist just bought that whole lot, we're made of accents houses, so we're, we're losing that. Cause we have more property that's owned by the school district and churches around here than we do anything else. And it's just sitting there. But the ability, if that would work, and then the ability to have a piece of property on the other side of town, where we don't, to my knowledge, have anything.
Yeah. So we table this and let y'all look at the community garden and kind of readdress it on the fif- the fifteen.
Can I say one more thing? Just to make sure we're all on the same page. Go back to the very first time I spoke here, if y'all decide y'all want to sell it, the district is willing to sign an agreement. Anything that y'all want us to, to say that that property's gonna go right back up for sale. Like, if we own that whole property, the full intention is to sell it all together as one for development, which is good for y'all, it's good for us. Okay, so I just wanna, I want that we said it on record, out in front of everybody. We're all for, going back to what we said at the very first, we're all for purchasing it, if that's an option. We got on this conversation about swapping, cause we thought that might work for somebody, if that doesn't work, we're all for trying to, trying to purchase it if, you know, if it goes to a bid process and we put in a bid and we win, then we will, we will.
The thing with the sealed bids, you don't have to disclose what any of the other bids are. They're open in closed session, and, um, so if you knew you wanted it to go through the school, then.
You just don't want it to be a school bid.
I just wanna make sure everybody understood our stance on that, so. Thank y'all, I hope I've given you all the information y'all need, and, um, we're here to help. Something comes up down the line, y'all have called out a property, you wanna go look at it, I'm available all the time, so let, let us know.
Do we need a motion to table this?
I mean, if we table, we can forward the property exchange with the owner of I S D of Block K.
A motion and a second, all approved. All opposed, motion carries. An extra discussion items, and it is, um, uh, the options for Ramsey Street, uh, more deeply and other utility and drainage considerations. So this was brought to me, um, as a proposed abandonment of Ramsey Street, which is the one that goes between the high school and junior high and the parking lot. But then looking at it and the plans, there's some other issues too that we need to discuss before the construction starts, so we know what we're dealing with. So, uh, do you wanna say anything on that?
Sure, so, um, if, if you saw, and I apologize for not bringing it, I, I should've brought that, that's on me, so. Yeah, surveyors, when, before the plans, the design plans, obviously no construction started on our, on our, um, expansion of the high school and junior high. Um, we're limited space, um, we started talking about construction, we started talking about utilizing all that interior courtyard area. Um, safety of our students is obviously the main focus of, of everything we always do, and, um, so we got, started talking with the architects about utilizing that interior courtyard area as a bus pickup and drop off, which is a traffic nightmare, y'all know that, TC can tell you that. Um, so if you go back and you wanna look at it, um, we've designed a, uh, bus pickup and drop off in that courtyard area, which takes up all of our extra space. So the architects took everything that we promised the community, and basically said, the only way that can happen is if we push into Ramsey just a little bit. So I got with the surveyors and I said, hey, give us some options. Um, you know, I, I do think Ramsey is an issue, um, we'll always have kids crossing that road. Our gym's there, we're not building a new gym, I've got proposed building a new ag facility across the road. Um, so when we talk about abandonment of it, that, that's not, doesn't have to happen. Um, obviously, nothing has to happen, but if what we would most likely need is if the council wants to keep Ramsey fully open and oper- um, operating, then we would need to reroute that just a little bit, it would need to curve into our parking lot and then go back around. Um, I personally, as a superintendent, would love for it to be, uh, locked out at least during school hours, um, to keep the safety of our kids walking across. Um, the way, the way that our school's set up, our kids walk across that road all day, every day. Um, so I'm, we've got options. I do want you to know that the architects have designed, um, of it pushing into Ramsey. And at, at minimum, we need to have a conversation about, I don't know what that looks like on y'all's side, of just changing that path at least, a little bit into our parking lot. Um, it could still stay, it could stay exactly like it is, two-way street. Um, we could close it during school hours, or we could go completely away from it, whatever works for you guys. Um, if y'all are saying that it can't change at all, then I'm gonna have to call the architects immediately and say, we gotta, we gotta go, um, on a completely different route. So, uh, that's just what they've, they've put out to us, and, um, the board has approved that design, hopefully that it's, you know, with y'all. It was, it's been a fast process, guys. Um, our, our backs against the wall trying to get this done anyway, so, um, yeah, that's where we are on that, so.
The problem with closing Ramsey to me is that, um, the streets surrounding it, they can't handle the traffic. Like, they're very narrow streets, and then a lot of times y'all get deliveries from semi trucks. And they cannot turn, um, and make a, a left there and go down, um, Ramsey on the other end, down your room, that's very narrow. There's overhead power lines and tree, tree limbs, and it's just, that corner there is not safe for a semi.
The, the only reason the surveyor ever brought up is cause he looked and he said both of the roads, college and, um, good God. Ray and Grady both go out to Fort Knox. He said, I don't see why you need this anyways, going off of what he said, said both of those streets. Right, I, I mean, I understand that. Um, it goes, you know, goes into a neighborhood, like I said, I'm not saying that it has to be closed, um, but I do, you know, options of maybe diverting it a little bit, or what that looks like on y'all's side.
What about just closing it during school hours?
When the delivery. I mean, the cafeteria gets a delivery at least once a week.
But the, the cafeteria, they don't, they don't go down, they back into, and then they turn and go back to major.
It would only be anything coming to like the front office area.
But even if that, if it's a special delivery, you can open it and let them.
But to me, that's saying, um, that, um, the school's the only one that can use that, not the public.
I mean, if it was changed to during school hours, like during school hours it's closed, then if it's a school-related thing.
So then another thing is, um, Chad from the fire department, he needs to have some input on that also, as far as safety for, like, um, I don't know, just like, TC, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, the, just the fire response, uh, you know, the, a big thing is, is if there was a fire, if there was a need for an ambulance, there's only one way in on that other end. They cannot go all the way around the school.
But would it be close to emergency vehicles?
I believe.
But here's my thing with all you do, I mean, if somebody ever been by drain, you do is go out and move the gate.
Yeah, and, and that's.
Like, I don't.
I, I understand that part of it, but the thing is, is there would be physical barriers, if I'm not mistaken, if you closed it during the day, is what we talked about, right?
It doesn't necessarily have to be, I mean, if it could be. Do not enter during school hours, I mean, it could easily be that, if we could, it would probably take us a little time to train people, but I mean, that would be better than what we have now.
Get out there for a couple of weeks and get ride tickets and gas.
Catch on pretty quick.
I would be perfectly fine with do not enter during school hours, I would, I do not have to have a gate. Is a gate safer for our kids?
I mean, I'm, I'm looking at the safety of our kids, especially if we're doing an ag facility out there and different things. If, it, it doesn't have to be like Fort Knox, I mean, if it, at drain, they just have that little.
Yeah.
And it keeps people, because a kid gets hit, I mean, that's also, especially if we're gonna have more traffic, cause they're gonna be not, no longer going into y'all's ag building in a fenced-in area, we're gonna have more foot traffic crossing there.
Well, even if like the new ag building wasn't an option or wasn't going there, I still thought for a while that the road needs to be closed during school hours or something. So we have kids walking over there with athletics in general, and like, you've got people just driving by, and like, you've got kids walking, and whether it's, you know, gonna, the risk of a kid getting hit, which in so many years, we've, we've never got a bit, had that happen, but you, a kid could get picked up, or I mean, it's just.
Well, one thing you also gotta consider in that too, is that if it's closed, it's closed to everybody. So that means it's closed to every employee, to the biggest. The biggest battle that I fight, I do not like writing teachers or school employees tickets. But the biggest battle I still presently fight is school employees going the wrong way consistently down the road. Turning into the parking lot illegally consistently. And there just needs to be an understanding that if it's gonna be closed, it's gonna be closed. And that means the gator that consistently violates the law, back and forth going the wrong way, you know. Case in point, Friday I had an issue where I stopped somebody for going the wrong way and as I'm out there writing the ticket, the family's in the parking lot. Giving me hell over it and here comes a baby, bebopping around going the wrong way on the gator, you know. It, it's, we're gonna have to have total buying on it.
Well, if you have a little gate on either end, then you, I mean, if they go through it. They're gonna have some damage. I mean, it's, it's gonna be on them more and it's a safe environment for. And, and with, I don't know how many of you have looked at the images that were, that are put up for the, what's proposed for the school. That it changes, the whole front of the, the front of the school is now gonna be facing the football field. So where we have like, where we enter in the high school now, that's gonna kinda be, so we're gonna, that's gonna be, there's gonna be more foot traffic. There anyways, because that's gonna be the main entry point into junior, you're gonna go into one office and then be told which way to go.
Well, I don't know how accurate this drawing is, but it's showing an extension there towards the. Parking lot and it looks like it takes up all of the existing street. At least on this, it looks like that to me.
Also look like it was taking up part of Grady also.
No, it's not. It is not on Grady. No.
So enough the drawing, the overlays just didn't match up or something.
It does go into Ramsey though.
How far do you know?
No, no.
Here you can see Ramsey pretty much go straight up into the little Ramsey in front of your house. And if you look at it on their drawing, you know, you know.
It doesn't.
The new facilities are gonna.
Here's Grady, right, so here's the front.
Over Ramsey's.
That's the front of the school house.
Now, right, here's the football field, okay? So it's not going to affect, you still, it's not gonna affect anything on this side, but it would, this is parking that, that is already there. But it's just gonna push out that grassy area between the junior high and the high school, right there on the side where the bus. So it would take that and that and then go out and we could, it would push Ramsey into the parking lot.
Right at the right front of it.
Yes, because we're, we're gonna need that area to go out further, but Grady sits right, it's not gonna affect, like here's.
So will there not be any parking? Like there's parking right in front of the school right now, on the side of the school.
I don't think there would be.
Is that the same park as now or is it?
It's, so no, that's the football, it's pushing.
Into our parking lot.
Into the parking lot, so Ramsey would normally be.
So I would say whatever footage that y'all take up, then push into the parking lot that much?
Yeah, I mean, we would take, however wide that road is, Ramsey is now, wherever we go into that, then it would just kinda wind in front.
So instead of going straight, it would go here and then wind around.
School architecture, I'll tell you, anytime you can wind a road is good for schools.
Slows them down.
Slows them down. They do not build straight roads into parking lots of school. Even when we come into Beefy's, that parking, that road, that new road that once we started on our property, will wind up to the school. You don't build straight roads into schools. So anytime you can build that, even if Ramsey stays open, which we're all good for. As it moves in and it winds around, i- if it stays open, then that slows traffic down at least. If we can close it during school hours, it's, it's the best of both worlds. Okay.
That's where your school's plan is right there, have this road go around the park, have all the parks everywhere for school.
Well, you've got the football field.
Got the two cell on the parking stand the same, right?
Yeah, well, the, I think, I think Ramsey would go right, this would be considered Ramsey, right around, I think. So it, it's literally everything stands same, it's just pushing it forward, towards the football field.
Okay, there's water and sewer in Ramsey and the new construction is gonna. Require that those be relocated, so and the school can pay for those relocations. There's maybe even a gas.
But all that would be in the, in the bond, right?
They're taking all that into account, you know, I mean, I, I'm not speaking for the architects, but they would've never planned going out that way if it couldn't have happened. So.
What would be the drawbacks to closing it during school hours, other than like you said, the deliveries and stuff which could be accounted for? I mean, you know when a truck's coming, right? If you go out and.
I feel like a lot of those deliveries could even come where the cafeteria ones are being delivered now, just make them go on that side, depending on what.
Well, cause they could swing through the bus, like they're, I mean.
Just reroute.
They could turn around, well, like.
Live there too, have to go all the way around the other way. On this side of the road.
Yeah.
But I mean, I'm not, if, I'm one of those people, I'm not necessarily opposed to.
I mean, there's.
I'm just, if the parking there, like, I guess it would change too, I haven't.
But if you're coming from your house, you can still.
About on Grady Street because that parking's going away on Grady Street.
No.
Nothing's happening in Grady.
Well, then when you back out, if the road's closed, then you're gonna have to either make the block down. Atkinson, because you can't back across the road, that's illegal.
Those people that live there are gonna be going the wrong way either way they go.
Well, that'd be, but Grady's not one-way.
No, it's not, but you back out, you're parked in, but you back out, you're supposed to go with the flow of traffic. You can't back in and go the other way, am I wrong TC?
Well, that road's not, it's not a divided road or not a striped road, so you could back out across.
Yeah, you can, like if you come, um, like from Ashley's house, like a minute, you're not driving into the school. You can still turn right on Grady and go back to, like that's not a.
Years ago, it was one-way, it changed.
But they changed it.
Cause it used to confuse me too, I remember when I first started with the woman group, I was like, this is a one-way.
Yeah, no, it, it used to be a one-way, but it's not, like you can still.
So from, if I'm with the Ashleys, I could still go right on Grady and avoid the school altogether.
Yeah, with that, no, it's all too.
Like, because you could, if you wanna come from your house, you could still turn.
And like, I know a few people would consider that a pain, but like, there's lots of schools that do that. Like any little school of course canon right now, it's a one-way during this time, or that one street is closed. And over in Hillsboro, same thing, they've got a little school over there that it's a one-way during that time.
I just think if for safety, and we're getting things where you can, we could have something put in the right way.
Yeah.
That's, you know, that could close off that so that our kids, cause we're gonna have more foot traffic. With the front of the school being kind of moved to face the.
The end of people are like visitors, I would assume, have to park in that parking lot right across and they gotta walk across the street to come in or, you know, whatever. And even kids like during school hours.
And with rerouting our bus route, any, any deliveries could go, and you kinda have the deliveries a little bit more marked off and specific. Cause right now, some people try to go in the gate, some people try to come in the front, I mean, it's, if we even had a sign, all deliveries. And they, that way they can go in there, they can turn around, come back out and then make that left turn, go right back to Main Street. I mean, if we just had signs without a, a gate, that just got closed during school hours and TC sits out there for a few weeks.
If it became an issue, like if it was, if enough, like if people were not listening or following it or whatever, then the option of a gate come later, like.
I just like that.
One way movable.
Yeah, just, yeah, I just like that, the option of a gate or a barrier. Just to really tell people, you can't go, you know, because those kids will take off in a dead sprint across that road and never even look. And with more foot traffic going that direction. Yes, yeah, elementary kids will at least stop and look, those high school kids.
We'll be walking back from the bar and I've got one that's just jerking it, I'm like.
And they never check out, never.
The school's done a whole lot to make it safer as it is, like painting and enforcing the crosswalks. You know, I, I can tell you, I've had, seen more buying from Mr. Gillen this year than I have before. Making kids use the crosswalks and stuff and, you know, it's, old hea- old habits are hard to break. So when kids have grown up their entire lives here and seen, you know, bell rings, just run across the road, you know, it's.
Well, high school boys are the worst too, going to athletics, cause they're.
They scatter.
They scatter. It just depends where their trucks park, cause they're just off there first.
So does anybody have an issue with closing it during school hours?
This discussion. We was just seeing what the options were with it and then we also had on here. Healy Utilities and Drainage, so.
I spoke that baffle was on our belt, my green last is around. That's pretty small right there. So what road is that? Oh, Ranger?
Wait, that's, that's, Healy's not on here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see.
Healy's not on here. We've got the elementary, yeah.
How's this elementary? Oh, actually, I don't know that road.
Cause what is, is this one?
So does this, does the school envision that the extension of Healy be a private road?
The one on the elementary school, like where, when you, across twenty-two, where you're gonna build the, the new street for the elementary. Is it gonna be private or is it public?
We're up for whatever. Like, I mean, we assume private, we're taking on all of the costs of building that because it's on our property. I've not come to ask y'all, I've tried to make it a public road, cause we built that in to the bond. I mean, we're, as, I mean, they've got it all budgeted in for us to go from the parking lot all the way to. The end of our property of building that.
What flow of traffic would be going through there specifically?
We've talked, we've talked about two ways. The, the one thing that we wanna accomplish at the elementary is that no cars ever crisscross, okay? So you'd have a group of parents coming in off fifty-five, looping out and going back out fifty-five, that never go towards the primary link. And then we've talked about getting with you and traffic flow and figuring out, would it be better to enter from Healy? And go out the back, back by the, um, what?
Ranger.
Ranger, or would it be better to enter Ranger and come out Healy?
No, long seater.
Long seater, long seater. So either way, you don't have any parents.
Crisscross.
Crisscross, or emerging traffic. So that's what we're wanting to accomplish, to have.
Buses won't go through there.
Buses will.
That was the one thing, I did hear some community members concerned about that and I was like, I don't think so, but.
Buses will stay the same as they are.
Yeah.
We're just trying to divert all the parent.
Parents.
Car rider people.
Two entries, two egress, two degress, two entries, two exits, where we have one.
Should alleviate the fifty-five congestion.
Correct, yeah. And then we'll have to figure out, once we get into our new system, how many sets of parents need to come off fifty-five? How many need to come off of either long seater or Healy? And that's just us setting our processes up. We just say grade levels, K, pre-K through whatever, and it could, it could change every year. We just want the traffic flow to be better. We want the emergency personnel to be able to get in there. I'm telling you right now, we double stack them. And if there's a fire at the end of the day, it's a deal game right now. All of our plans still have an emergency lane in there, so even if we single or dou- double stack them, there's still an emergency lane in there. For that, we're just, we're trying to make it better, so. So you'd either be entering or exiting one way or the other, going straight or.
That definitely helps.
Going straight or.
It's funny how early this, a lot of the elementary parents get.
Like two o'clock, and they're sitting there till four to pick up their kid.
I actually like entering from the south and going north and exiting off of. Long seater, out that way, cause you got a long stretch.
Yeah.
There's a long winding road, they can stack in, as far as they, like I do not think they would push all the way back to Healy. So that's what I personally like, but I just, you know, I think we have to really figure out.
I think it's gonna take. So is that all we've been doing, which is discussing that?
While we have Mr. Bruce here.
Yeah.
Let me speak about one other thing, that drainage there at college and Ramsey. Were after a month, you know, it just puddles up there, there's really no place for the water to go. And I think with the rerouting Ramsey into the parking lot. That issue needs to be addressed when they design it.
Yes, like inlets and.
So they, just so y'all know too, we surveyed every square inch of our property, full topo, full everything. And they're addressing all that, all the way down to the drainage, down to the ag building, all the things. Can we all fix it all at once? But we'll have a full topographic survey of every square inch of our property, so I think they would take that into account.
Did they go out into the streets?
Well, you, they stopped at our property and picked up in the parking lot, so I think just, you see what I'm saying, Mr. Carroll? Like I don't, we didn't, we won't receive survey of the actual street, but they'll have full topographic maps of what our property does. And then where it picks up on the other side in the parking lot, so we'll, we'll be able to assess all the, all the drainage.
That issue was all the way down where you do, doesn't it?
Usually they get the top of curb in the gutter, in the centerline of the street. That way you know how the water's moving.
And they might've done that, I'm, yeah.
That's what I would expect them to do.
Yeah.
And just for you, you may wanna talk to Chad Marshall about the plans too, cause he was wanting to be a part of this. And make sure that all the fire stuff is taken care of.
Absolutely.
He was trying to be here tonight and I guess he got caught at work or something. Uh, next is discussed workshop date for interlocal agreement. This is the thing with Ross. We said we'd take care of this after the budget time. And where we didn't make a list of the pros and cons of the.
Can we get that, take that interlocal agreement again? I don't know why I couldn't. When I saw the song, I was gonna look for it, I don't know, I couldn't find it.
It could be in the packet, whatever way you decide on the meeting day, so I don't know how soon.
That would be split.
That's a lot of page, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Could that also be like a good thing?
Y'all wanna do it on the.
It's two, well, two total pages, but the page and two more signatures.
The other item is gonna be quick, remember? The other item was for the fifteen, so that'd be a quick one. I probably, I probably would've been with.
I wonder what, okay, so that probably won't be quick. A noise ordinance.
Yeah. Block K might take it. We put that, the thing that blocks K in there, it might be freaking midnight for.
We could do it earlier, start it earlier. I don't have anything, I don't know much of it, but I don't have anything that day.
You know, Wednesday, meet Park's doctor, if you can.
We said six-thirty now, but we could do five thirty, go cam, or five. That way, instead of us trying to schedule another meeting workshop, we just get it all done right up in there. Cause my calendar brought to words.
I'm down for dinner on the fifteenth, just starting backing it up some.
We say five o'clock.
You good Bill? And then, uh, next is, uh, C resilient communities grant preliminary draft, so. The city grant, Ford maker, the groundwork guy, Edwin, he wanted us to get y'all to look at this. And see if y'all have any questions or any changes before we have our next meeting. Uh, questions or any changes before we have our next meeting on uh, with them next Monday. And this is just a part that kind of tells about the city and um, the.
Man, that talking is so small, you can tell me what what that second line says.
Maybe I question, it's nervous, but I'm gonna lie, doctor. You're such an interesting shape.
Says the fireman or something.
Yo, you're gonna quit, you're making us feel old, okay?
I didn't, I didn't bring.
I've seen you with lessons before, I have, I have my phone calls on in here.
Yeah, I've got one too. And the key, little key back thing?
I also wanted to see what the fiber outline was, that's what it'd be the second one.
Next.
Oh, the ETJ we were talking about.
City, that's the ETJ, so this is the city limits, this is our.
What is ETJ?
Extranet territorial jurisdiction. So that's like when all are out of town, water hookups and stuff.
Was that from memory or Jackson and Jackson Reed?
Oh, no, that was from memory, I'm just having a.
I can see it, I'm lying.
Last name, she was like, can you get your eyes checked again too? Cause I'm alone, my family doesn't wear glasses and now this makes me wonder, like. No, I'm good.
One thing I saw on numbers, page seven, they got the elevations completely wrong, the elevation.
You know that from memory?
I think those some stuff is, I don't think you get this.
Okay, how is this numbered or is this countable?
No, lower right.
The ones that aren't pictures are numbered.
Elevation, elevation in Little Grove are highest in the northwest and western parts of the city, reaching eight hundred and seventy feet.
I don't think so.
No, no.
And drop down.
Maybe the highest might be six twenty.
Yeah.
And the lowest over here is probably five forty over there Rush Creek.
I think, I think six forty or so is the highest, isn't that like your land over there or is that across the street somewhere over there, like six forty?
Ted's is a little higher.
Same area, same area.
Six twenty.
He used to say the highest point where he can. Yeah, cause they always.
Is it six forty?
I'm sure he knows about her glasses, that's what he used to say all the time, they bought that lid.
I don't know, I never saw him say anything. Oh, here, if you can read on the next one, though.
I can read that one, yeah. I'm like, is this a color change or is it, it's actually bigger than.
Bigger?
Yeah, and the next one is even bigger.
And a lot of this they pulled from the urgency management there, there.
Please spit a lot of hours in that one, urgency management, hazard management, hazard mitigation.
What is this version? This is, we put this together for Bill or they?
They're putting it together, it's a ten-year plan for the city. And we'll have one more workshop, I think he said January is gonna be our third and final workshop on that.
Projected, that's changed.
Okay, so, that's, that's it on that. And then I request a quote from McGuire to paint the city name on the elevated storage tank, that had kept in the hazard. Y'all do want to hang back on the um, water tower, they may have to do a budget amendment depending on what it comes back.
I don't think so.
You don't think so?
We'll do it. We'll get the name.
They're three foot high and, I don't know, this one, yeah. Just Little Grove is a lot better.
While they're up there, they might as well do it.
There was somebody else that just recently painted their water tower, that turned out really cool.
Well, the city of Harvard is pretty cool, um, they have like the BG, like we have in front of the um, the gym. They have it on their water tower, that it closes at night, but during the day, it looks normal. And I've reached out to them, the city, we put this on there, I don't know what it cost, but nobody ever got back to me.
Well, you know, the one that we have on front of the gym just looks normal during the day. And it's pretty cool, I don't know if they're not.
You said you're wondering.
On the gym?
Looking neon a lot.
Facing this, the, like you're like standing on the football field, yeah, no, it is.
Yeah, that's pretty neat.
At night, it's. I haven't ever seen, and I've walked in there like it's, yeah, early, early in the morning, and during the day, it just looks normal, but at night, it's a little bit closed.
I think we'll add that some of that water tower.
Or just some recognition.
Something that's a little bit graphic. Yeah, other than just the words Little Grove, cause I always, whenever I'm driving through places, I'll see like they have a whole like thing painted on the water.
Logo, yeah, logo that works.
Maybe it was currents that just repainted theirs that I saw, saw a picture. That was pretty cool, like they did more than just.
It's just that during the day, um. So we, you kind of see, and I'll pass it around, I saved it to y'all, just for the messages, and then there it is at night.
Well, that is really cool.
So like pass it around.
So you should show McGuire that and ask them what that would cost. But we have more, so we have three, three more, I think there's one in the elementary. Are those glowing signs, we have, we've got one in the junior high, we've got, if you drive by the front of the high school. Um, right now and look in the windows, you can see there's one.
That's what I was just thinking, I could donate this one for going through the construction process.
Is that backlit or is that some sort of glowing?
Here's the, no, it's neon, cause you can see it on.
Oh, you can see the lights, yeah.
The tubes.
Tubes.
No, the water's.
It makes you drop to kick.
It's actually the the hose.
Just like an acrylic thing, um.
You talking about the one at the gym?
Yeah, is it backlit?
I don't remember.
Oh, yes.
And they may be three dimensional.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's, it's. I thought I had a picture of it like I first saw it, but it went up, but it's really, look when you go that way. Um, and you can also, when you go in front of the high school, look in the front doors and you can see the one there, it's got the BG, it says high school. And then there's one in the library that has the BG and I think says be the standard, I think the junior high has one and the elementary has one.
Well, sad is I probably drove about a hundred times a night.
And and I never have a occasion to drive by the front of the high school.
I don't either, I live right by it and I never drive.
I don't even have them, there's literally no reason.
I mean, I drive too fast, I'd have to.
All right, so we need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Hey, all, all approved.